I would like to call the September twenty first twenty twenty-three Wall City Council meeting to order. And Carolyn, if you would, please read roll call.
Welsh here. Morgan.
Here.
Stan Anderson.
There.
Houston.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Ah. Mike Anderson.
Here.
We do have a form.
Okay. Let's please stand and say the pleasure of meeting. Kelly, could you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, in this bill with liberty and justice for all.
We do now any order of business or emergencies?
No.
And is there attendance on Zoom?
Katie is present on Zoom just for taking the minutes.
And the next item is to approve the agenda. And I'm going to ask that ten, eleven, and twelve, we are going to move around a little bit just for efficiency. And we're going to have Travis Hershey above number ten. And then he will handle number eleven and we'll move ten down to twelve. And that will flow better for Tim Hartman. So with those, with that adjustment, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move.
Mike has moved.
I have.
And Stan seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Is there anyone that has a conflict of interest?
I suppose I've been abstaining from item number eleven.
Exact, okay, Jerry has, is abstaining from the Western Construction pay request. Any others? Thank you, Jerry. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, in the consent agenda are the minutes and the budget report, as well as the sales tax report, cash and money market balance, and the building permit to replace shingles with metal at six oh five Glenn Street. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item number nine is the claims for the city of Wall, the library, and the cemetery claims.
And fire department.
Oh, okay, and fire department. Do I have a motion to approve the wall, library, the city wall, library, fire, and cemetery claims?
The moment.
Okay, Stan moved.
Second.
Kelly has seconded. Any concerns, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, with that, then, I would like to introduce Travis Hershey. And he is going to give us a PowerPoint presentation and bring us up to date in terms of the airport project. So with that, I'm going to move out of his way. Oh, so it went away while we were doing that?
Yeah, I think it just, I think it just goes down to sleep. But I think we can get this up quick.
Yeah, okay.
Perfect. Okay. So I'm going to actually stand up kind of where Barry was at, and that's and talk to you a little bit about the airport here. As you may know, I'm Travis Hershey. I work with me at Mead Hunt as the assistant project manager on the airport project we have here. So I'd like to talk to you a little bit about your airport, its future, and our, and the project we have at hand here. So I've got just a couple pictures of here some progress that we have to start. But first off, I want to talk just about your airport because I don't think everyone's always heard. I don't know where everyone's at with their understanding of our project here or of our airport and where, how we got to the point that we are. So originally, this project with, or the airport was constructed in nineteen forty-six. And it was thirty-five hundred feet by six hundred feet wa, or sixty feet wide. So at the time, that was just a turf runway. Now, in nineteen eighty-six, that was put down with some aggregate. We had about eight or nine to to eleven inches of aggregate, and then it had two layers of chip seal. So it was kind of operating as an asphalt with the two layers of chip seal, but it wasn't much. In nineteen ninety-three, it was, it was overlaid with some asphalt, which brought us to today where we're looking at this reconstruct, extend, and widen. So from, going from the thirty-five hundred foot runway to a, to a forty-four foot runway. I'm going to talk to some of the reasons why we did this. And, and why we widened it all. So looking at a project here, what was the, what was the reasoning? So the main reason is that we need to meet the, the critical aircraft at the airport. Those are mostly Preston's airport aircraft with his air tractors and his spraying operation. So he's got some air, air tractor eight, or eight oh two As. But along with that, these all fall into a runway design, or an airport design group too. So other aircraft, they're going to be able to be able to use our runway. Now, when we're done here with the widening and lengthening, is that we have a Cessna Citation, which is a smaller jet, but a pretty big aircraft along with some King Airs. So King Airs are, are what the, the state uses, and the state's got two King Airs. So they'll be able to easily land. Uh, another reason that we had to look at this is you can see I have a pavement condition index here. The pavement condition index at the time was fifty-nine. Pavement condition indexes are basically a scoring of how your pavement's doing, and it kind of works like a letter grade. So if you're in the ninety to one hundreds, that's, that's a good score. So that's like an A. Eighty, eighties, that's about to be seventies RC, and what, fifty-nine, we're we're in the DAF at the time. So not good for a runway that was producing pod. So at the time, we needed to look at that, and then we needed to bring it up to meet the aircraft that they're being used out at the airport. Along with this project, through the, through the planning effort, we were able to develop some safer, clearer approaches. We're pushing back the runway approaches. You know, we have some grain bins that are kind of in line with their, with the runway. That gets us a little more safety to, to get away from those. Some other benefits, um, I gave a similar presentation for some people here. I know, I know Stan, you were at the, at the, the, uh,
Chamber.
Chamber, chamber meeting, and I gave a similar presentation here. I got a question about, well, what's our maintenance look like? Well, with this new system, we have an improved system where our electrical is going to be in a vault building. So we'll have a regulated control. So hopefully, we're looking at less maintenance. The other big benefit is the old system was about thirty years old. Now it's brand new, so we would anticipate less maintenance costs to the city. So hopefully, that's looking at some cost savings looking in the future. Other benefits is our, our switch into LEE systems versus a incandescent, so less power should be used. Hopefully, we see a lower electrical bill. And then it's regulator control, which is better system. You have more control if needed, so. Um. So other miscellaneous local benefits that we're looking at is that we're able to salvage the existing uh, equipment that we have out there, and we're, we're, with the help of the DOT, we're giving that over to, to Kadoka to improve their system. So they're going to have the year-old beacon and old runway light, so that they're going to improve their port as well. So we, we get to help the region as well. And then there is, then we're able to salvage a large, or the, the old runway, and that's being used on various projects. I think KLJ with the, on their project, that Echo Valley is using some of that material. So you're getting the value of that as well. So some benefits there. I want to talk about a little where we're at here, where, where we're at with construction, where we're looking moving forward. Right now, we're on the, on the verge of paving. So next week, Monday, Tuesday, depending on what the weather looks like on, on Thursday, Friday here, we'll be, we'll be paving the project. We're looking at an opening early in November, somewhere early in, in November. I always like talking about funding here because the funding's always a big, big question. You know, we're, we're spending a lot of money at the airport. Why are we doing that? Where's it coming from, right? So I've got this, this exit or this, this pie chart here that, that you can see the bulk of your dollars are coming from the FAA, and that's through bill and the discretionary grant. So they're paying ninety percent of it. Another five percent were approximately three hundred thousand dollars is coming from the state. And then we're looking at about three hundred thousand dollars locally with that from, from the city. So that really brings up the question of what are the benefits we're seeing with spending all this money at, at, at the airport? And I think it goes pretty well to say that you don't spend five million dollars plus, or over five million dollars in a city like Wall and not see some local benefits. Some of that comes from people aren't using local facilities. Their, uh, Western Construction has at least full, ten full-time people being supported by this project. Everyone likes to go out to eat lunch every day, so they're buying, buying your, your fuel with their vehicles. They're, they're going out for meals. People love going out to some fuel, the food trucks that we had in town. Those are a big hit. Some of the other items is they're buying most their fuel locally for construction. So when we're moving all these equipments with dozers and et cetera, they're buying the fuel locally here, so that's, that's helping your local economy and spending, spending some of this five million dollars back locally. And hopefully, the city's getting some of the, that, that money back as taxes. So I know the city's looking at seeing some, some bumps with taxes, and I would anticipate that between the, the project here at the airport and probably the, the project that KLJ has been working with here are helping to contribute to that. Those are, they're, they're big projects. The last thing I want to talk about is some of the, the local infrastructure outside of the airport that gets built for this. So Western Construction ended up opening a pit relatively locally here, about eighteen miles away. That, opening that pit, now we have that infrastructure, that pit available. So when a, a future project comes, hopefully, that can be reopened, some more crushing operations. We get a lower cost for it, so that, that pit's there. So those are just some local benefits. So if you didn't care about the airport at all, there's other benefits to, to, to think about, so. So that kind of brings all, brings me then to the, the runway project. Now I just want to talk to you a little bit about your airport moving forward here. So there was a, a planning effort that went through. So we have an existing airport layout, and we have a proposed airport layout. You can see with this proposed airport layout, we have the extended runway here. So this is the runway that we, that we're building with this project. And you can see some other things that could potentially happen in the future, like parallel taxiway and some apron improvements here. And that's really what I want to get to next is one of the next items that we're going to be looking at with, with your airport here in the, in the future. Uh, we have a terminal layout plan here shown. So we have the existing layout. This is just blow up of, of the last thing, and we have the ultimate layout. One problem that we're looking at at the airport right now is we have no space for a hangar development. You can see on this, this proposed layout, I can't build any of these hangers without adding more pavement, developing the airfield a little more. So through discussions with that, that we had at the chamber and some discussions with Preston, we've actually recently revised your CIP to bring this project forward because I think this is the more, the most, the most, or the, the most interest project that we have. So with this, we'll be able to at least build some taxi lanes. So we have that because the general area, everyone in the hills are building taxi lanes, extensions, they're building hangers. There's a huge demand for it. So hopefully, if we have an availability that someone becomes interested at the time, we have a location that we can say, hey, you want to come to Wall and build a hangar? We've got a place for you. So tentatively, we're looking at that apron expansion now planned for twenty-six, twenty-seven. That's really coming down to the availability of funds and how we can build up funds with the FAA through their entitlement program and through their bill. Uh, which is the, the by parts of the infrastructure law that was passed by relatively senior taxpayers. Hopefully, this airport, this apron expansion is going to provide some space for transient pilots. It's important to have these services or spaces for pilots. It makes your airport more, a, a better destination to land in. It, you know, more people coming into your airport, that helps the community. They might walk into town and spend some dollars. So giving those opportunities, you know, the pilots really like to hop around airport to airport. They can say, hey, I flew into Wall last weekend. And having these spots for transient pilots is important, so. Um, and then the other thing is we'd hopefully be looking at improving some local or the existing utility services. So right now, we have some small, small water lines, small electrical, providing better electrical water lines is more attractive for, for people coming into the airport. Or if they want to build a hangar, that we have the better services available. All right, this brings me my last item here, and that is the capital improvement plan. So as I talked, we've got a uh, plan for next year is twenty twenty-three, twenty-four is the AGIS services. That's basically a requirement when you do a project like this with the runway. It's, it's a connected action. The benefit is like, we can hopefully get the, some survey done, so we can get the FAA with some approaches or to develop the approaches quicker. Otherwise, it's basically a requirement the FAA has to do AGIS for their, keeping track of where your airports at and obstructions, et cetera. Other things, the, the next item that we're looking at doing is in twenty-five, or twenty twenty-five, hopefully be designing the, the general aviation apron, hangar, and hangar area expansion with construction happening twenty-six, twenty-seven. And then that leaves a runway turnaround for twenty-eight, twenty-nine, when we're able to build up funds again. So, so there's some other future projects we can look at, but those are all twenty, thirty plus. So that's like a perimeter fence, snow removal equipment, maintenance or apron maintenance, which is like seal coating, crack sealing your apron. And, and then there's a weather monitoring systems. Pilots can know the weather in the area before flying in. So that concludes my, my little talk here on your airport. Does anyone get any questions?
I would assume the process of these other projects that they go down and play will be the same split.
Yes, yeah, um. It all depends on eligibility, but the FAA's programs work at a, right now at ninety percent or ninety-ten. Recent, prior years, the DOT was only contributing three and a half percent. They recently brought that up to five percent. It'll depend on when we, you know, when we get to that point on what, where their funding's at, but should be at least ninety percent with, with the FAA. Any other questions? Barry, you got anything there?
Well, the one thing that Dave generally kind of pointed out is we have a lot. When the airport's open, when the runway's available, we have a lot more air, airplanes landing out there that, than most of us even know.
Yep.
And so that was very interesting, and, um, the possibility that maybe we should be looking at providing fuel so that people could land, and he gave us a great example. Maybe it was you, a, a small. Do you want to?
Yeah, I can talk a little on some of those items here. So, uh, I believe Dave talked about that there's a weekend that there, there was a, a flying event around the area, and, and they had upwards of eighty operations, operations landing, taking off at the airport. Now it was eighty operations in one weekend at your airport, so there are people getting some use out of it. And now that we've extended and widened the runway, that's just that many more people that, that can use it. So it's going to be a lot smoother surface as well compared, compared to your old runway. Talking on fuel here, uh, if I'm a transient pilot, I'm, you know, or I'm transient, just go from airport to airport. I don't, it's not where you stay. Uh, if I'm flying into your airport, the one thing you got to think about is if you don't have fuel available, like Wall right now, is I got to know I've got enough fuel to get out of here again, because there's no way to get fuel right now. So having that service of, of, of developing a, a fuel system is important to like a self-service that they can go get their fuel. So then, then that gives them one more reason that they're, that maybe they're doing a cross-country trip, and they're like, Wall's got fuel, so I can land there, have a place to stay. We, in, I think twenty eighteen, we, we, we built that new pilots lounge. That's another huge item. So they, they have a, so the SRE Pilot's Lounge Vault that they're able to go to um, and, and have a spot to sit down, get out, get out of the sun, you know, figure out their next plan moving forward. These are all huge services when you're trying to promote an airport. So if they, so this apron expansion, when we have that, we're going to have a spot that we can build that fuel system, so. Uh, that'll come with some other items, so like developing a fuel system and insurance requirements. But I, I think it's a, a, a huge benefit to have that, you know, it just makes your airport that much more attractive. Especially for, uh, like, say, say you, you have a hangar at Wall. It'd be really nice to just be able to fuel all of your aircraft right at, right at your, uh, right at where your hangars at, instead of having to fly somewhere else.
Does the story check to be above ground or below ground?
Um, typically, we're seeing people put above ground in nowadays because they're, for one, they're more cost effective, and you know if it spills, it's, it's very obvious, so, um. But I believe most are, or you can do an underground, but most people are going with the above-ground system. And then there, then there's, there's carrier, or there's self-service kiosk that, that specializes in air aviation. So they, they've got, they, they do cloud computing, and you get all your billing through there. It's, it's really slick, so.
So more of a one ton of fuel and one person.
Correct, yep, yep. So typically, you'd be looking at a, a low lead one hundred, and that's going to be something for like some of the, the prop planes and smaller planes. Then there's jet fuel or jet A, which is your, your other option that you'd see. Um, we'd have to look at who you're, who you're getting in as to whether or not we have both as an option or just the one as an option. Um, it, it really depends, but more than likely, you want the low lead for one hundred, which is your, your typical fuel for, for pilots, so. Um. To get there, though, we got to get through this apron expansion, and with, you know, we, we got to develop a lot before that. But it, it'd be an important service, I think, to provide and to keep on our mind, so.
And one of the reasons the smaller airports are so popular is because Rapid City is getting tougher to get in and out of, right?
Correct.
For little planes.
Yes, so if you are a, a pilot on your own, your, your GA pilot, when you, when you're flying out of Rapid City, you have to communicate with air traffic control tower. It's a lot of work. You got to be on the radio. You got to be very concise. They're not always the nicest people to you if you're, if you don't know what you're talking about. So the benefit of an, an airport like Wall is when you're that pilot, well, you don't have that huge traffic going through, so you can just, you know, announce that you're taking off on the runway and, and, and get up and get and go. You know, um. The other thing is Rapid City right now doesn't have any space to expand. Their, their GA is maxed out. So that's kind of where we're seeing in the region where places like Spearfish and Sturgis are building hangers, they're building taxi lanes for these GA tenants. All these, all these, all this demand from Rapid City can't be supported by Rapid City anymore. So having the airport here in Wall might be lucrative for someone to be like, hey, maybe, maybe I could go to Wall instead of going to somewhere like, uh, Spearfish or, or, or Custer. They're all, they're all building taxis and hangers because, because the demand's here. You can't find a hangar right now as a pilot, so you got to build your own now. Most of them are unused up, so this would be a good step for Wall to, to maybe be that, the place, you know.
And then just mention about those flying, those check the runway deals that's going to happen here.
Yep, yep. So in when we open up the runway, we, we're putting in some, some, some PAPs, which are visual approaches. When you're coming in, you, you want to make sure that you're coming at the right angle. You're not coming in too low, you're not coming in too high. Um, but those need to be checked by the FAA with their flight check. So we'll be coordinating to have the FAA come in and do their flight check. With those, they usually either fly a Challenger, which is a very big aircraft. It's about eighty thousand pounds, something way bigger that should not touch our runway here at Wall because it'll, it'll crush it. It's, it's too big, but you, you might see it around, um, but they'll come and fly the approach to make sure that you can fly, that it's, that it's a good approach for everyone, a good and safe approach. So, uh, you might see that around town. There's a chance they fly King Air as well, I believe. So they have a couple flights, but with that, but that'll be happening in November sometime. Got to get the PAPs installed first, the electrical system all in place, and then, uh, but we'll scheduling for, for the opening on that. Along with that, I think we're going to be looking at hopefully doing some, some event, some opening, grand opening event for, for it, so. The, keep it in your mind. We don't have anything exactly figured out, but, uh, but it'd be great to do an event like that. So maybe the community can see, and be involved and, and see what really happened out at the airport.
Cool. Okay, any other questions? Thanks. Thank you so much.
Yeah. That was really important.
So then that takes us right to that pay request. They have, that's item number eleven on our, uh, agenda for Western Construction.
Okay, so as I talked here, we're, we're doing a partial paid request for Western Construction. Uh, this is a request number ten. For this item, we're looking at a payment of two hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. The payments primarily for leading us through gravel. Most of, most of this amount is for the, the gravel that we grow up for the runway. And I think some surveying, so. If there isn't any questions, I would say my recommendation would be to approve and process payment for a, a request number ten for Western Construction.
And the amount of that pay request is two hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Do any, um, first of all, would I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, Stan has moved.
Second.
Emery has seconded. Are there any questions or concerns that Travis might be able to answer for us? We've seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are doing a great job out there. I enjoy attending your meetings, so.
I appreciate when you show up.
Okay, thank you.
And anyone's welcome. There are two things that tend.
Every week.
Every week.
Yep, okay. So then that brings us to, um, Mr. Hartman. Would you like to talk to us about, uh, your projects?
Absolutely. So Echo Valley subdivision project, and maybe I'll kind of give you a, an update on progress there and then circle back on what our, our two action items are tonight. Um, we did have a, a good progress meeting this afternoon with the contractor as well, and kind of progress of where we're at there. On the projects, sanitary sewer is complete and then the ground, um, so that's wrapped up. The water main is being wrapped up kind of today and this week. Uh, as we speak, the majority of that's all in. Majority of it's been pressure tested, they all look good, and they're just wrapping the water main up. They then plan to circle back around and sort of climbing the curb stops and third of all the lots. Uh, and then after that, they will just move into the, the final grading of the street and street surfacing and seeding. Uh, with that street, there's some culvers to be placed, uh, do their grading, shape the road, and then, of course, get the gravel surfacing on it. Um, they're kind of expecting that to happen here within the next couple of weeks, and then seeding at the first part of October. With the grading, I just did put a couple notes that I wanted to call to your attention in case you're passing by the, the site over there. Uh, right at the intersection of Stone Drive and our new Echo Valley Drive, there is a conflicting power pole uh, that's in the way of where our, our new radius is going to come onto the street. So we're coordinating with West River Electric to come in and get that moved. We've got that in progress. I don't have a set date, but if you see a crew out there with a big digger truck, that's what they're working on. We, we're also working right at the intersection, uh, at, as you turn up onto our new intersection on Echo Valley Drive. There was kind of an unexpected service line for the home on the north side. It came from a whole different direction than what we were understanding during our site survey and design process. Unfortunately, that service line goes underneath where the new road and the ditches are going to be cut. It's not deep enough, um, to get the, that in. So we'll have to rebury that. Uh, West River requires that to be within conduits, and there will just be a slight change in cost there. It's, it's fairly minimal. Uh, we'll get the, the distance all finalized and account for that likely on a final change order, a final quantity balance change order. And then last thing I just wanted to mention as well, we are tracking and aware of their connection on interest with the lots in there. And with that, we're aware that we're missing a few property, front property corners just because of the grading operations. We don't want to rush it and get those set or they just be ripped out by the builder again. Um, so as they, they wrap up their final grading and seeding, we'll, we'll get the surveyors and bring in those set as well. Um, so with that, the, the actual action item for tonight, probably the first one to talk about a little bit, we have change order two. And that, that change order is doing a couple different things. First one being, uh, we had designed for and planned for the, the new water main to circle around the top part of the new Echo Valley Drive and come down and, and terminate uh, with a master plan, eventually connecting that down to Spill Drat or Dockport Drat, excuse me. Um, and as we, we, we found where design wrapped up and then the plating followed, and there was one lot at the south side of the finalized plats at these phases that didn't have water service to it. So we did, uh, we wanted to extend that water main down to a hundred and twenty feet, add one more curb stop, and, uh, and also. We did, uh we wanted to extend that water main down to hundred twenty feet, add one more curb stop and uh and also. Yeah, to service that final, that that last lot down there, so one thing we talked about the progress mean I think is is noteworthy is. There is a cost there now, however, with the master plan of making that water loop. So that's kind of nice as well, um so that's part of that change order, and then the last thing, uh working with the contractor, they did request. Two additional weeks to the contract times for a couple of different reasons, first one being we added a little bit of work. With that patch on Stone Drive and added a little bit of work with the water line, and then they did have somewhat of a wet season, wet start to the project and some weather. Weather there, um so we did uh agree to and are supportive of adding fourteen days to the contract. To adjust the completion date out to October fifteenth, um but then would would diligently work with the contractor to get it all closed out at that time. And and reserve the. The liquidated damages is needed as well, so um that's the the request for the change order, and with those, that kind of explanation, we're. Comfortable recommending approval for that, and then I'll just maybe kind of wrap up my spiel with. Pay estimate five basically just represents kind of that work that's completed, sewer done, water made in um. Start system grading and and leaves the final grading, seating, electrical conduit, all remaining to be paid, so. Any questions for me?
So I might mention on the change order for ten thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars. We did contact the street committee and they gave um preliminary approval because the. The machinery was sitting right there, ready to to put that uh hundred and twenty feet in, I believe it was. And so it made sense to move ahead on that, and as he indicated, it also extends the contract time. Uh to by fourteen days, so that's still gonna be pretty doggone awesome to think that they. Uh when they started and they were delayed by rain and they're still gonna have that done by October fifteenth, and yes, there are people buying lots up there. So with that being said, may I uh ask for a motion for change order number two? Uh for ten thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars as well as extending the. The deadline or completion time uh by fourteen days, do I have a motion?
I made that motion.
Rick has moved.
Second.
And Jerry is second, any questions about this change order? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, motion carries, all right, and then the next part of that then is. For uh one hundred and forty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-one cents. And um Mister Hartman has already completed or told us all the things that covers. To get us to this point. Um with that being said, do I have a motion to approve change or or the not change order, it is. The pay request number five. Second, Mike has moved and Kelly has seconded, are there any questions or concerns? Okay, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And with that, Mayor Council, I'm gonna call him right on there, yeah. You're interested. I'll get data, he's got a quick update on a couple of other projects.
All right. Uh back talking about industrial park development, uh the lift station project out there, um. At the last Friday, the contractor came into liquidated damages. Now it was five hundred dollars per day, they were out there ahead of that a little bit, um. Addressing some of their concerns out there, the our biggest concern is the water infiltration that was getting in some of the manholes. Uh they were out there a couple of times, uh we looked at that today, uh there's still a little bit of water, but now we're gonna. Go back to the contractor and tell them to test it and see if it meets the air test, uh. And if it does, then that would be an allowable amount of. A little bit of groundwater getting there, so we can we can see a little bit of the the manhole sweating. Down the very bottom, it's sweaty because of the groundwater is cooler than the the rest of the 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 ground out there, but. So we're not sure if it's just the sweating of the manhole or if there's a a panel that we're missing uh somewhere, so. Uh we talked to Gary about that, he seemed to okay with that approach and uh next steps is to get them out there to to test it. Um they also have the contractors a few, a few minor things to do, fix a latch on hatch. And fix. Oh, street sign and then install a little bit of a valve in the uh. In the in the vault as well, and that that they they're scheduled to come out next to do that, so.
Okay, you said street sign?
Yeah, Garrett pointed out, there was a uh I think a twenty-five mile per hour street sign that was laid down.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. Yeah, all right.
So what did the what did the contractor have to do then Dana for that water leak?
So they they came out and what was going on is when the pipe comes to the manhole. They didn't really have a a good seal where the pipe was entered the manhole, there there was a gasket there, and for whatever reason, that wasn't sealed. So the the manhole manufacturer actually actually came out and he was able to put some sealable material. Kind of back in that void, um I'm not sure exactly what materialized, some sort of palpable material, but. Uh that that improved it a lot, because before it was almost like a garden hose, like a full garden hose. Coming through there, um and now it's probably be a pencil, pencil or pen worth of a drip. Kind of coming in there through the, we we can see it in the end is where we see a problem.
And you don't anticipate that if we got a bunch of moisture that would change, hopefully not.
Right, yeah, I I think we're all, because we can see, we can see all the way up the rest of the manhole. And we can't see any visible drips like coming in the joints of the manhole or dropping down. Um what we can see is more of sweating at the bottom, um. So I I think we'll test it, see what we can find out, um just technically if they pass the test, then then it really is. Even spec and it's probably just the sweating of the that we're seeing.
Well, the stuff that they put in there is hopefully that's strong and it will last.
Yes, and we, there's a year warranty that will still be coming. All that that started back in. Earlier in the spring, so there's a we have like one another year that'll, if if there's something wrong, they can come back and fix that, so.
But once they put pressure to that, if if it didn't take, we're gonna know it pretty quick.
Yeah, yeah, and it's a low pressure, um but it's enough that. You know, we should we should see it.
It's gonna go to a weak spot.
Yeah, yeah, we'll see it if it doesn't hold that pressure. Any other thing, any questions, Danny? Uh other project, Fourth Avenue Reconstruction, um the good news is the DOT approved the plans yesterday, so that's good news. Um they sent out an email that we're ready for. Their part is done, now we can go to um into the bidding part. Um a couple of things before we do that, though, I will send. The rubber permit to Carolyn for Mary to sign, they're they're okay with our permit. Um I submitted the plans to the DNR and that's really for utility water sewer review. We'll get that back in October. Typically no issues there. Um and then I'll be really jumping on the landowner meetings, and I and I've reached out to some of the landowners. Uh even last year, talking to Eric and Marty and a few others that lived on there and. There's a few in the room that I'll be reaching out to, uh probably as early as tomorrow, we even start talking. Uh really temporary easements, we need one, one permanent. Um land acquisition from the church where there's a little sliver right at the corner for them that we just like them to. Donate to us and we have some improvements for them on some some payment and some stuff that they'll get about us. I'll get a hold of Chris about that, uh but we're still tracking with that bidding in the fall. Um I'm really thinking that'll probably be towards, um well, I'll get with I'll get with you Carolyn on some dates and. Probably try to set it up late October, early Novembers, and then soon after that, we'll have a council meeting to to go to approval of the bids. Any questions on?
So because I was asked um about sidewalks along that Fourth Avenue, can you tell us about sidewalks?
Yes, um so we'll have sidewalks of full length on both sides. Um sometimes the sidewalk is up against the curb, uh for the majority, then there's uh one spot Golden West where the. Where the sidewalk is actually more what we call the Boulevard Sidewalk, there's. Um road, grass, and then sidewalk, I mean, that's really at the Golden West, that's area, good. Um that that's kind of, that's a requirement of that grant is to have sidewalks installed with them. Um looking at some of the other sidewalks to the south of there, I think it'll be a good benefit to have those blocks in there.
And about how wide are those sidewalks, are they, they're nice sidewalks?
Yeah, I think we have either four foots or five foot sidewalks.
Okay.
Concrete.
All right.
Yeah, it'll be a good project when it's all done, uh we talked a little bit earlier today about some of the timelines and stuff, and. We'll be really giving the contractor from roughly the spring to late fall with some stipulations in there of. Um they gotta be away from the green elevator. Main street area before Memorial Days, we have some time, time requirements like that, get them out of there, then we have a lot of. A lot of signage to to detour cars from exit to the campground or. Getting them around through Glen Street and then back over to the campground or Waldrog or whatever it be, really give them, give them some good directional signs. And then we we talked to Jerry a while back too about. Truck routing and different stuff and um, yeah, I think we got a good plan there, we got Jerry's number on speed dial. That's fine, some of them will just come down Main Street anyway.
But you see that working for Dakota now, the way he's got it planned and. Because it'll be a huge improvement when it's done, for sure, but it's just getting there.
Yeah, kind of like the airport, you know, it's can't use it much when they're working on it, but then once it's done, it's everybody really likes it.
It's so needed, for sure.
If you don't fix it a bit and if you know, well, you're fixing it a bit.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Very much.
Thanks, Dave, Dana.
Thank you and thanks for all your hard work between the last meeting and this meeting.
Yeah.
I assume that went well.
That was it, that it did, we have no more work to do, so we'll cut out.
Okay.
I did see you over there, both shoveling hands.
Yeah.
I was gonna roll my leg down and take a picture back.
I'll expect tomatoes or something.
Hopefully a flashlight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Very informative. Okay. All right. That brings us to item number thirteen, is there anyone here that would like to give public comments? It would be to um discuss or express concerns to the council on anything that's on or not on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the ambulance report, Miss Lily.
So I just wanna give you a quick report on the ambulance. Um for the month of August, the whole ambulance responded to a full of twenty calls. Thirteen of those calls were transported to the hospital, we had six or a few rows. One was canceled and one was law enforcement evaluation. The one thing I probably should remind, um that out of these twenty calls, we had only thirteen transports and we only can deal with transfers. So the rest of the calls was not due at all. Um, one of the things we. It was some paperwork issue in a path, so we had to do a new Medicare revaluation. Uh couldn't do it with Medicare patients for a while, because some of the paperwork wasn't done properly, but. We finally got it done, so enrolled back into Medicare and we can deal with Medicare patients right now. Uh we still have troubles trying to set up like a online payment, because right now we sustain it only by uh cash or check. Um since we're very small for this, it's very hard to set it up, so. Our billing company trying to find a different vendor, but. Unfortunately, I was I was hopeful we're gonna be able to have it by now, but still nothing, so. It doesn't help much, um but it is what it is, we just have to keep looking. So the one of the things I should mention for months of September, we've been pretty busy for the month of September, we had about twenty calls by now. And some days we had two or three calls, and we have only one pre-owned call, and those call. Calls, all those calls came in like in a three-hour timeframe, that's. We've been pretty fortunate because we have two local EMTs, and if they're available, they usually call us and say, okay. You guys need help, we can go and save this call because the pre-done one I have called, so. Uh so it's been a little bit of um work in progress situations and not perfect at all, um. But we made it work, but it's been pretty busy for the month of September, which is really. Concerns for stopping issues we have, because we do have stopping issues, so everybody else, um maybe, but. Um we have about eighty percent of our EMTs coming from Rapid City, and in times when somebody called and seeks. That's become a challenge, especially because we have one paid for seven call with a volunteer driver. Um we have to try to figure out who's gonna fill this spot, because people from Rapid City are not gonna come and fill somebody's ship. So it worked out so far, but it's a concern for sure. Um it's having only one medic and having a driver, and so. I'm very, um. I'm very grateful for our volunteer drivers, we don't have many, we don't, I probably don't like. With me, um but I'm thankful that they help us. Because it's been tough to uh fill this schedule and um. Yeah, they usually step in and they take most of the control they would they would like to, I have a concern, they're gonna burn down pretty quick. But there is many things we have to address with our coming year, so we're working on our budget, I think we'll finalize it and we. Meeting with you guys next week, we'll probably talk about it more on the view, and um. Right now, I know that's um Melanie that's working on our uh. County tax assessment, so. So I don't know for sure how much money we're gonna receive from there, so. Um we're working with the county, trying to make sure that we have it right when we're gonna file everything, but um. I just hope, hopefully, we're gonna get more money, that's what we call for, because we need it, otherwise, we need more money coming from the tax district, so. So this is all I had, unless you guys have any questions, uh I can answer it, but that's kind of. We're still in business, we I think we make it work, um just like I said, it's not perfect, but it's lots of. Community effort, some people stepped up and helped and um only there to help. It's a struggle, it's a struggle, because we don't have many, that's a trouble.
You don't have one, Lily.
We don't have many like drivers or. It's 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 hard to fill the schedule, right, because I'm the one who's making schedule, so it's pretty hard when I work in the stadium. You always have days, we just, you start calling people and asking every single person, can you build a ship? So.
Really appreciate your efforts in regards to the ambulance.
Thank you. Yeah, do you guys have any question?
Well, and it's really tough when you're trying to make it work. And you have limited funds and limited help.
Yeah.
I it's it's. Like a teeter totter, it's you're you're always battling one, you're, you know. And it's. You know, with with some of the new drivers and stuff, you know, we kind of talked about that a little bit. And until they have been doing it long enough with, you know, and know where everything's kind of at, which we've been working on and. You know, trying to hopefully get some training and stuff, some more training and stuff like that, you know. Um once they get to that point, then it it's almost like they're a second, you know, person on there, but until that point, it's. It's kind of a stress on the driver and the. The medic, so.
Yes, that's all I had, and um we'll probably talk more about it next week on the week, so.
Okay, thank you, Lily.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item fifteen. Economic development.
So an invitation here for you guys. If you want to help this in October, Mary, you can have some. I spent most of September doing some educational courses over economic development. I was in Build the Growth last week, which is a course through Black Hills State University. And I graduated this month, April. And then yesterday and the day before, I was at the Economic Development Annual Conference in Brookings, which had pretty much all the economic development directors from the different communities there, so that was some good networking and met a lot of them and learned what the other communities are up to. And then I have, next month, I'm planning to do this Build Dakota Scholarship informational breakfast. This will just inform local businesses about the Build Dakota Scholarship, which helps them get students into the workforce. And Denny Martin, the program manager, will be there to speak on it, so everyone's welcome to attend and if you know anyone that would be interested, please pass the information on. And then our next board meeting is next Wednesday at six P M.
You said six P M.
Next Wednesday, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number sixteen is environmental study agreement. And that is with Quality Services Incorporated. Carolyn, do you want to address that?
So we've been working on the Red Lake loan for the Fourth Avenue project and a requirement of that is to do an environmental study, which yeah, get a, another company like this Quality.
Quality Services.
Quality Services. For that, and so this is an agreement that they have given to us to move forward with that process because it is a requirement of the loan application, so. Pretty detailed, but something that does need to be done if we're gonna continue moving forward with this loan application.
And so they do a NEPA and they have to look for fossils and architecture. They also go by the name of Impact Seven G, so it's kind of a inter. They go by book names. Anyway, so if you see G seven on any paperwork, that's, it's the same as Quality Services. This was the same company that also did our study at the industrial part for the economic development. So it's something that's very much needed and they're also under a deadline to meet the deadline for the USDA grant. So with that being said, would, does anyone have any questions or would I have a motion to approve?
And that was, this is for thirty-two thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, so Stan has moved and Rick has seconded to approve the contract with Quality Services and Impact Seven G Company for thirty-two thousand dollars. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those opposed, they die. Opposed. Motion carries. Okay? And then that brings us to the next item, which is the REA loan application because what?
You did approve a resolution, which is going to be adopted, which that needs to be submitted along with this loan application, but I, and it does basically give approval for that, but I just to make sure we're covered when we request any copies of minutes or anything. I just put this on the agenda so that we can actually get a verbal motion to approve the loan application that we have been working on and submitting for this project.
So it's a USDA grant, a loan that we're working with West River Electric Association as an intermediary, I think it's called. It's for a two million dollar loan. And Carolyn and, and the individual Eric Quasine has been very instrumental in helping us apply and he works for a power company in eastern South Dakota. And Don Hilton Camp, so I need a motion that would indicate approval to submit this loan application for the Fourth Avenue project through USDA Rural Economic Development Loan program called Red Lake, R E D L G. Excuse me, Kelly? Kelly is moving to approve. And Stan has seconded. Is there any other questions?
What's the interest rate on this loan if we get zero?
This is a big deal. Carolyn has worked really hard on getting this there.
Thank you both.
This is gonna happen. Now, the other little piece of information, which you probably share, we're still gonna be looking for about seven hundred thousand dollars someplace else. So Stan, Rick, you get right on that part, okay? Okay, so with that being said, it has been moved and seconded to approve the USDA Rural Economic Development Loan Red Lake Application. All those in favor say aye? Opposed, so motion carries. Okay? Right. So next is the Wall Clinic Second Amendment to Lease Agreement. And attached to that document that Carolyn sent out is also some surplus furniture that the city of Wall owned while it was a dental clinic. So first, we need to address the amended lease for this premises.
Which basically gives Monument Health access to this space that the dental office is not going to be
Yes.
Yep, yep, so we, you guys had approved that, so I sent a email to them and asked them to present us with an amendment to that lease to that effect, and so this is what I've shared with you and then they indicated that we would also have this office equipment from the dental office and so that process would be to declare a surplus and then to see about getting rid of it. Some of it, I think, we can probably use locally, but I'm not really sure that we can use something wing X-ray machine. And for the record, I have not been asked to review this lease amendment.
Okay, so is there do I have a motion to approve the Wall Clinic Amendment to the Lease Agreement?
Because you're related? No. Mayor has advised me in the past, I want to review legal documents on behalf of the state unless requested.
Who, who did write it? The attorneys for?
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
No. Are they paying more for the more space? They don't pay hardly anything anyway, do they?
They, yeah, their agreement is that they pay that one dollar fee, but.
So this is just a digital space for?
Yeah, part of that agreement before was that that space, they could sublease it and we didn't get any money on that sublease. That was just a benefit to them, so they're getting that sublease, but they're able to use the extra space.
Okay, it's been moved to, to approve the amended lease agreement with Monument Health. Okay, so Jerry has moved, Stan has seconded. Any other questions?
I've read it, but you know, it's legalese. I don't follow. Shouldn't we have our heavier look at it? Yes, I felt comfortable with their attorneys looking at it, but.
Well, and I was overlooked it, you know, just make sure that there wasn't anything that was talking about like you know upkeep on, you know, the property or there was no changes and, and it doesn't look like there was anything on.
Is, is that what they're in working on now? Cause I drive by there about five, six times a day and.
Well, they are actually doing remodeling on the rest of the clinic. So this is kind of a timely thing for them to be able to move ahead and remodel that space.
I'm sure they can use the space.
Yes, for sure.
Yeah, and there wasn't anything.
And that's part of that original lease, that if they do any remodeling inside, it's on their dime. Until they spend up to a certain dollar amount. And then we pay a portion of that. Okay, and that happened on the road, if you remember, that they that's when we.
They have to pay for some of the upkeep and maintenance.
After they reached a certain dollar amount, and that was the first amendment that we made to the agreement.
Okay? So it's been moved and seconded. Do we have a motion to approve?
Did, we did, didn't we? We have a motion second?
Yeah, we have Morgan and Stan seconded.
Okay, so Jerry has moved, Stan has seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, and then the next thing on the agenda was to declare the list exhibited as surplus items which then would provide us to either utilize or market or give away or dispose of. Would that be true, Carol? Of surplus? So would I have a motion to surplus the dental office Exhibit A list? Okay, Stan has moved. Second, and Jerry has seconded. Any other questions? Yeah. Especially five or five trash cans, for sure.
One.
Yeah.
So is that X-ray machine, I assume?
I'm pretty sure it's all pretty outdated.
I could check with the South Dakota Dental Association again and see if that, if that would be something they would want as well as the dentist chair, those, those.
Well, it wouldn't hurt to contact.
Yeah. Even if we gave it away.
It, it might be, even if we had to dispose of it, maybe it has to go someplace special.
Oh, good idea.
I dream we could start a dental museum.
Okay, so do I have a motion to surplus the dental items?
Yeah, I have Stan and I have Jerry.
Okay. Same thing again, okay, so.
Turn it around.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, that's approved.
So I, one quick question in regards to, so I would assume documentation and all that, somebody's they probably took, man probably took his stuff and then.
Yes, table. And then so at some point, I'll reach out to them after you guys, I was waiting for this, you know, motion to surplus and the city will need to go get it out of their way.
I think I've seen quite a bit of it on the south side of the building.
Not quite sure where, have that chance to ask here where he thinks they will store that.
Okay, moving on to item number twenty. Twenty twenty-three tax levy request, Carolyn.
So this is a levy request that the county sends out to us every year based on property talk, property tax valuations and new construction that goes into it and so the request, the maximum request we can get is that three hundred and ninety-three thousand.
Four hundred and ten?
Yeah.
I think I buried last year.
It's about thirty thousand more.
And, and Carolyn, don't we always go for the maximum?
Yeah. And this does have to get committed back to the county by September thirtieth, so starting to get it approved, so I can send it back.
Okay, so Jerry has moved. Mike has seconded to approve the two twenty twenty-three tax levy request for three hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay? So that brings us to the mayor's report and I believe we all received an email that indicated that the Supreme Court oral arguments will be October fourth. And it's nine o'clock central time and eight o'clock Mountain. Checking with Unified Judicial System, I learned that they actually, if you want to listen live, you can go to their website and click on the headphones deal icon and you would be able to listen to the presentation live or because it's off-site from peer, the circle, I forget what her name was, but indicated that it would take them maybe two days to get it on, so you could go back and listen to it again or at another time. But usually they have it on like within one day, but it'll be two days.
And, and Mary, what website is that?
Oh, so, and I'm going to ask Carolyn, put that on our city page. It's the Unified Judicial, South Dakota Unified Judicial system website. So if you just Google that, it takes you there and then on.
Well, that's really nice.
Yeah. So just remember it's eight o'clock our time. And the other report I had is that I attended the school board meeting last, the regular meeting last week, or a week ago Wednesday, to speak wearing two hats, one to talk about our construction breakfast that we're hosting to introduce Build Dakota Scholarships to our local employers. And then I returned to the special meeting last night and then Danny Law was there to speak and support. Dick Johnson was there to speak and support as well as myself and John Dietrich also had a late pour, so he couldn't be there, but spent, sent words of support. And so Carolyn, tell us how that went.
The school board approved the construction contract, construction contract with RCS to move forward on our CTE.
At the proposed rate?
At the proposed.
Or, or dollar amount, construction amount?
Bits that came in.
So remind me, when will that be usable for students?
In twenty twenty-four.
So next fall.
Also, have they bid at rate? Oh, who got the bid? RCS?
Well, RCS sent out bids, but there were all these subcontractors that were a part of that. So, you know, for the HVAC, for the all that. It's a whole list and it's all. I can share it with you guys. I don't, I have it on my, in my office, but you know, like we've got maybe three bids. I think we got four bids on the HVAC. That was what came in a little high was the electrical HVAC and all that. The bids did come in higher than we had hoped, but it's kind of typical for. it's kind of typical for construction and we really need to move forward on this project.
So at the regular meeting, that's when they learned that it was about nine hundred thousand high, and they held the special meeting then, um, Wednesday night, last night, and, uh, decided to move forward anyway for the benefit of the kids. And Danny Law, uh, for those of you that don't know, he is on the technical board for South Dakota Technical Board, as well as, uh, Dick Johnson is on the like Board of Education for Western Dakota Tech, because, uh, they moved away from Rapid City School District a few years ago and set up their own board and so to have two individuals from our community on those very significant important boards is, is awesome. So with that, that concludes my report, so Carolyn, please, on the finance.
So there is at the national level, a meeting that through the South Dakota Municipal League. That's called the National League of Cities, um, that they encourage board representative from our municipal league that I serve on. Typically, it's the president of the board that they invite to go, and the municipal league pays for the expenses except for your meals, whatever, but the flights, the lodging and all that. So the upcoming president of that board, which is Harry from Padoka, is not able to attend that, and so they reached down to me because I'm the next person in line. And it's November fourteenth through the eighteenth, which will conflict with a board meeting that month. And so I was asking for approval to attend that because they need to start getting flights and lodging schedule for me if I can attend, and, um, definitely would work on changing that meeting date when that conflicts with that.
Okay, Stan has moved to, and Kelly has seconded to approve Carolyn attending the National League of Cities in Orlando, Georgia, November fourteenth through the eighteenth for the South Dakota Municipal League. And just to be clear, that means that you will be president of that organization.
In twenty twenty-five.
In twenty twenty-five, so, uh.
About twenty twenty-four slash twenty twenty-five, next fall, I will. Harry takes position at the conference coming up in October, and next October, I will move to that position.
Yeah, so it is important for you to attend for the state of South, South Dakota, actually. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries, okay?
And then I've been working on getting the employee evaluation schedule, um. I, the committee, I guess I just is to reiterate, the committee will meet on Friday, the twenty-ninth, for the city officials that will be going through that, we've already done Katie's, so she won't pull through it again. Kendall hasn't reached her six months yet, Gary hasn't reached his six months yet. So it'll just be Garrett, Trevor and I, and then October third will be for the library staff. To get their schedule logged in. And then, um, coming up on Monday, we're continuing to working on the planning and zoning committee, working on the zoning ordinance, and so we have a meeting coming up, uh, Monday for that.
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
It mustn't change.
No, you're probably right, uh, with all these meetings, I'm kind of getting confused.
And like, Carolyn, this is a two-hour meeting, so I have nine thirty to eleven thirty.
Yeah, yes, and then we'll have another kind of follow-up meeting after that.
Okay.
And, um, got a real rough draft of the budget put together, and the budget committee will be meeting next Wednesday morning, following a meeting that they're set with the ambulance. And I am continuing to work on the G-Lux trainings, um, that new software that I'm getting, uh, there's what they call Front Desk, which is my, I'm gonna sail now, I had a training the other last week on that. The GL accounts and all that, so plugging away at that, it takes time to get that all fit in with everything else. But it's going pretty well. And then, uh, there was a request for a group of people that are going to be doing a benefit at the community center for, um, an individual to raise some funds for medical costs that they're having and wondered if we would waive the fees for them to use this facility for fundraisers.
So Stan has moved, and Jerry has seconded to waive fees for a upcoming fundraiser for medical expenses for a community member. Any questions or concerns?
Any, is there a date or not really yet? Uh, no, I think it is maybe.
Hey Carolyn, I think it's for November eleventh.
Oh, November, okay, November eleven, sorry. Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions or thoughts? Oh, oh.
No, I, not on that.
Okay. So we do have a motion, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, okay, so that has been approved.
Well, I just had questions on the budget committee. There's been numerous emails to go on, where I think our budget committee meeting the three plus four is gonna be after we meet with the ambulance on the twenty-seventh.
Correct, so next Wednesday, yeah.
And you're still good with that Lily, right? You and Melanie and.
Correct.
At eight thirty, ambulance at eight thirty, and then probably nine thirty is what I'm thinking. Yeah, okay, so good question, okay, anything else? Carolyn, for your report that we haven't addressed?
Not the kind, that's all I have.
Okay, and, uh, moving on then, the public works report, um, Garrett was here earlier for the, um, meetings with the construction folks. Uh, he wanted me to report for him. The Bobcat is working. Good.
Awesome. For now.
For now. And he didn't take it to Jenners. When he was trying to load it to take it to Jenners, it started working.
That's wonderful.
Now is when you traded in.
That's what I was thinking, great time to trade.
Well, it is on his list, so.
Good.
Budget committee will be addressing.
He is still pursuing.
Yes, he is. And because it's been working so good, you've probably noticed he has been out and about um, cleaning out drainage dishes with the front end motor, with the Bobcat, with the mini deal, and hauling that off, so I feel confident that if we get any rain, it is gonna go north. So.
And they were, uh, also in the alleyway there by the store um, off the South Boulevard, um, I visited with him and Gary briefly, um, about some options as far as getting that water to drain and they kind of hopefully, um, you know, uh, show the neighbor that, that they're trying to get something to work, so we kind of came up with a plan to cut in a certain spot through that alley, and then they did some trenching on the west side of that alleyway, so um, that not all the water would then flow to the north as much as it would, um, flow to the south and to the north, it'll kind of split, you know, depending on how much is there, so.
So you're in that alley and a little bit north of your.
Yep.
DQ.
Yep.
Okay, good.
Cause I seen him out there talking, I was just wondering what they were doing. You know, we're just trying to come up with a plan, cause I think they've tried darn near about anything, you know, cutting that alleyway down, then they added some in, then gravel was coming in from the west side, so they cut in on the west side, um, and then we kind of crossed that alleyway a little bit, so that we can get some of the the lower spot to flow to the south and catch the gutter and, and then go west, so. Hopefully it'll help.
Yes, that would be great. Okay, and then he said that on his, they've been getting a ton of stuff done more this fall and late summer, it's amazing, so his to-do list for next week is start cleaning sewers. So he'll be out and about doing that, so that's what he shared with me for tonight. All right, are there any other items for discussion that need to be brought forward? At this moment, item number twenty-four, seeing none. Uh, the next council meeting will be October second. That is a meeting date change, and it's to accommodate the fact that South Dakota Municipal League starts that next day. I'm not seeing, um, the person representing the gender request. Is there any information from him that we need? You've not heard from anything there, okay, so we're gonna step away from that. So then, um, Mr. Trask, do you have an attorney report this night, tonight?
Okay, um, I would say the biggest component of my report tonight is to address, um, the meeting minutes in general, and then, um, correcting inaccuracies specifically, um, so because I don't usually come to every meeting, if every other meeting typically, uh, I usually review meeting minutes in preparation for the next meeting that I come to, and in doing so, I have noticed, um, an increasing trend in the style of the minutes, which has become very narrative, um, and particularly narrative when it comes to my items, so for example, um, I was asked to advise on our discussion regarding our zoning ordinance, our existing zoning ordinance and ratification of that, and we have a over-half page narrative um, with regard to that item, which is inconsistent with the allotment, um, throughout the minutes, so inconsistency is, is a problem, and then in addition to that, direct quotations in storybook format, um, in the minutes that are not seen anywhere else in the minutes, just, just with regard to uh, my advice section, uh, concerning ratification of the ordinance. So I, I definitely initially, um, have a concern that we're getting very narrative and biased and inconsistent in our meeting minutes, um. Then the, um, a- and along that note, um, I, I would encourage and remind the council that um, there is no duty to approve the meeting minutes on the consent agenda, if you notice inaccuracies errors in the minutes, so just keep in mind, and I, I would also, uh, specifically advise to check the meeting minutes that are included in the council packets, not necessarily earlier versions, and just be certain that, um, the minutes reflect, um, the accurate record. And then when I, I, on my second item, um, the inaccuracy that I feel it necessary to reflect um, on page three of the August third meeting minutes regarding ratification of our zoning ordinance. Um, this storybook format, uh, says among other things, um, that Hawk asked Trask, if the zoning ordinance is changed now, wouldn't love see it's being done after the fact. Trask responded, no. That is a, a statement, I don't know if it was inadvertently or very deliberately, but it looks very deliberately taken out of context. Obviously, Love's in pending litigation before the Supreme Court as we speak is going to find out about a change to our zoning ordinance. I would never have responded, no, they're not going to find out about it. And eh, there's no way they couldn't find out about it, this is all public record, uh, but much less during pending litigation. What I was actually responding to, um, was the question, does it matter, and, and in the context that I was responding, does it matter if we change our ordinance now, does that make it ineffective for purposes of the Love's litigation, and my response was no. Because the, the litigation as it sits, um, would have to either proceed the way it is, or Love's has to resubmit a building permit application, um, so it's not going to matter that we ratify our ordinances, or it's not going to make ratification ineffective. Um, because Love's becomes aware that we're ratifying our ordinance. So that, that was a, a critical, um, inaccuracy, and I want that noted in this evening's minutes, that I did not respond, no, I don't foresee Love's finding out about ratification of our zoning ordinance.
What was the date of those minutes?
That was the August third meeting minutes. There's also, um, a narrative comment that Trask commented, it is negligent to not ratify the current ordinances. I believe my comment was, it's irresponsible, considering we know that our zoning ordinance currently has flaws, and it's being targeted, um, and we know it's a simple procedure to ratify it. I didn't say negligent to my knowledge, because that is a legal term, I said irresponsible. So, um, any questions on that item? Okay, um, and my second one is simply approval of my amendment to agreement for city attorney services as submitted to the council as discussed via email and submitted to the council.
Okay, and I'd like that to be addressed in executive session, since it's a contractual agreement. Does that meet your approval?
Does.
Great, okay. All right. Anything else?
Not for me.
Okay. So with that being said, is, is there any other items that need to be brought? At the moment, okay, then with that being said, would you like to do?
I make a motion, we go on to executive session for the purpose of discussing legal personnel issues according to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, going to can say executive session. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Okay, does anyone need a quick break here? And declares out of executive session. There any, um, motions to be made to follow up?
Yes, I'll, I'll make, uh, a motion that we, uh, accept, uh, Ken takes, uh, offer of a thousand dollar, uh, discount on his attorney's fees and move on from that.
It's been moved, uh, to accept the offer for a thousand dollars. Is there a second to that? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Okay. Is there any other?
I've made a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment to the agreement for the city attorney's services. Uh original document dated February twenty seventeen. Uh and raise our rate. To a hundred and fifty dollars per hour and purely go till we build a rate of seventy-five hour.
Okay, it's been moved to approve a hundred and fifty dollar rate. There a second?
I'll second it.
Ricky has seconded, any other comments? All of them.
That it won't be a hundred and fifty dollar rate, it will be a rate to a hundred and fifty.
She said rate.
Right.
So, okay. No, I just thought she said it the wrong way.
And do we need to indicate anything on the hundred dollar part of that, you know?
It'll be in the motion.
That's not it, that's not the truth, is it? You're just making a motion on on.
Approving the amendment.
Right.
Uh to the contract?
Right.
Okay, so now where are we on our motions and seconds, who seconded that?
Kelly.
Kelly seconded?
Did you second that? No, I seconded, I'm sorry. Geez, my memory's getting retarded.
I, yeah, you can't remember it, okay. So it's been moved to second, any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Okay, anything else?
Yes. Uh I wouldn't make, not bad for sure, I'd make that, you know, I'd make.
No.
I'd make a motion that we uh.
Amend the minutes from August third.
That the the minutes. Um the minute from August third may be uh. Red and. Like you say, amended to uh. Reflect. Stephanie Trask's. Corrections. And do you want it sent to her for review?
Yes.
And sent to her for review.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Post, motion carries. Is there any other items to be brought before the uh council tonight? Hey, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Go.
Stan moved?
Second.
Mike seconded? Any other comments? Meaning, oh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Post? Meeting is adjourned.
I won't be at October second meeting.